The Warren County Board of Education to order, they have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. This time we please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, motion carries. This time, student advisory.
Okay, we haven't received a report from them, have we?
No.
Okay. Oh, she's sick, okay. She's been out sick, so...
Do you want to go past recognition or go into operations?
Yeah, let's go into operations, if you don't care.
Yes. This time, Mr. Cox, operations.
Okay. Get over to the operations report. We'll try to come back to recognitions when they get there. The first item, I think it's in your packet, is the career readiness diploma standard. And this is kind of something that we've been looking at for a couple of years. And actually, we got it from Hamlin County Schools. We need to give them credit for their vision on that. But the career readiness diploma standard would be, just kind of to explain, it has 14 different points on there, from attendance to absence, tardiness, discipline, overall grade point average, drug-free, CTE completion and coursework, meeting the Tennessee promise standard, dual enrollment standard credit, industry certification, enrollment in post-secondary, career readiness certificates, and just attending industry awareness standard or industry awareness events. And what a student would do is they would collect points throughout the year. And at the end of the year, if they collected 20 points from each one of these standards, then on their diploma, they would have a embossed stamp on their diploma that identified them as meeting the career readiness standard, that they're ready to enter the workforce, that they've completed these items. And we've asked, sent this out in an effort to send it out to business and industry and try to get business and industry to be sponsors, I guess you would say, for this. And what we are asking the businesses to do is just recognize that that student has met the qualifications to be considered a work-ready student. We would provide them the information from our records of the points that they had accrued and a list of names of those students and graduate from Warren County High School with that standard. And then all we would ask the businesses to do was to provide them an interview for a position that was open, that was it. Not asking them any for any money, not asking for anything. But like I said, Hamlin County has done this and really had a good turnout with that. And you know, I feel like one of our jobs is to, you know, not only to educate our students to be able to go to college and/or attend the technical school or go into a career, but you know, ensure that they're ready to go to work. And you know, the biggest things that I hear from employers is that, you know, we need people who will come to work, who will be here on time, and then we can train them the way that we, you know, we need to train. So I felt like this would be a good starting point. And so far, we have, I think, six businesses in Warren County and surrounding counties of Manchester that are interested in being a part. Eurozu is, has signed on, MultiSource signed on, Bolden Corporation, Batesville Casket, Jarden and Metal Products. And that's so far, those are the ones that we have signed on. And we hope that we can get more to sign on as well. And Chamber of Commerce has really been helping us, you know, promote this and Business Roundtable. But you know, if, I know Jimmy may have some, you know, things that he'd like to say, but I think it's...
We just want to put a better product out there. And this is one of that, make sure to get some of our kids to access this and gives a little incentive too.
We want, not only would we want to put that embossed stamp on their diploma that they could show that they've completed the work-ready standard, but also we'd recognize them with a co-work or a graduation as well. So I'm just, if you all are in favor of doing that, like I said, it's not, there's not a financial note to it. It's just really us collecting the information and working with the business community to put out a product.
Like we can go wrong with it.
Yeah. I think it's a, it's a good thing. We just need a motion from board to move forward. This is something that y'all are interested in us pursuing.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the career readiness program?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Well, I just, I don't know, I guess I had a little heartburn on... I know, I know Manchester is a, is a, has a lot of jobs there, more maybe than in our county. But it, it's a little uneasiness, you know, to think that, okay, yeah, you know, go somewhere else, you know, but that's, that's probably the best we can, that's probably the best for them if we can say, we'll find a job in this area. We hope that you stay in Warren County, but yeah.
I mean, I think that's our, you know, goal is for everybody to stay in Warren County. And you know, I think the workforce now is getting so global, you know, it's...
Right, right.
We have students that, you know, will probably, you know, try to get a job at, you know, any of the automotive areas Nissan and Reach On out of town. And of course, we want to, our sole focus is keep our best and brightest here. I mean, that's the goal of it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I know we've had businesses contact us from out of town. Of course, Viame, one of them, that, you know, uses a plastics company out here to, you know, supply them, so it's, you know, and they, they sign off. We partner with a lot in our region for grants as well. We signed off on a grant that's a consortium grant.
Yeah.
Brought those in.
Well, and yeah, I guess the ultimate thing is to get the graduate a job.
Right.
If that's what they're after, you know, and yeah. So no matter where it's at, maybe where they get the first choice.
Oh, sure, right. Well, and that's, you know, any of our, like I said, our Business Roundtable works really well with us. And you know, we want to make sure that we're taking care of Warren County first. That's, that's, you know, the number one job.
Yeah.
Is support the workforce here, so. But I think this will give us a start.
Yeah.
And then we can move forward from there.
I think the, the meaning of a student who's prepared for career or college, I think that definition has evolved over time. And I think we've evolved to the point where we understand that our responsibility doesn't end when they walk across the graduation stage. We have a, we have an obligation to them, their parents, the community, to get them as prepared as they can possibly be. And I think that's what this career readiness diploma standard, that, that helps clarify and put the spotlight on that accountability for the school system.
Sure, sure. Well, and then, you know, another grant that we're already involved in that the state is really pushing and really, you know, kind of helping to fund, we've been in it for really two years, is the Pathways to Prosperity Grant. And that's with, it's a State Department grant, but it is really through COOP in that area. So we have, you know, it's us, White County, Putnam County, Overton County, Jackson County are involved in the grant. And so we've sent, with Commissioner Boyd was in Putnam County, we were able to send students to Putnam County to meet him and tour their businesses there. And I just think it gives them a good opportunity to be across the spectrum. And we take students every year to Nissan and Decker and across the board, so.
Right, right.
We'll, we'll move forward with that and keep everybody updated, you know, with that. But I think it's a good step, you know, for our kids. So we're trying to start rolling that, that out. Insurance premiums, that's, that's been very exciting over the last few weeks. You know, we've had several discussions trying to keep everybody updated on insurance. So I wanted to try to bring a, a more comprehensive update to you. As you, when we were in our budgeting process, we knew that we were going to have about a 6.1% increase from the state in insurance premium. So we did budget for that this year. And basically, what is, what's happening is most, about half of the school systems in the state purchase third-party gap insurance to allow their employees to purchase a limited plan or a limited option plan and then purchase gap insurance because it was a lower premium and you were able to save money on the premium, but you were also able to get better benefits. So about half the states, about half of the school systems in the state were involved in that. We really didn't get involved in that until last year. And we had about 10 employees that took advantage of that. So this year, over the summer, we had several state meetings where that, in the MOU with the state insurance plan, the gap insurance was not a part of that. So no school system now can have gap insurance. They did put a third, another plan in the insurance offerings. And so everybody has to move away from the gap plan. So some, you know, districts were more involved in that than we were. Really didn't hurt us that much because we didn't have that many involved. But in looking at the number that we have, we have about 491 of our 950 employees that take insurance, both classified and certified. You know, looking at the figures that we have, you know, some of the lower-cost plans were, went up more than the higher-cost plans. So you know, with obviously the intent of the insurance program was to, you know, drive more folks from the lower-cost plans to the higher-cost plans, which, you know, is not really good for our employees. That kind of, you know, takes more money out of their pocket. So we really looked at the number that we had, looked at the increase. We feel like that there's going to be about a, anywhere between $70,000 to $100,000 increase for the school system this year, which we had planned for anyway. Also, with the gap program moving away, the state will provide in January anywhere between, I was told, 61,000 to 180,000 in extra funding for insurance for school systems next year. So in looking at that, you know, we, before I got that information, we had sent out the revised worksheet of what it was going to cost our employees to have insurance for next year, which was, you know, some, the limited plan went up, you know, close to almost 80% when you do the actual numbers of the increase. It just didn't feel like that was fair to pass that much of an increase on to our employees, especially since, you know, we had, we kind of planned for that, budgeted for that, and then we found out we were going to get a little bit of extra money. So I feel like that we can cover, what's in your packet is the same increase or the same premium that we had last year across the board with the addition of the no partnership promise plan, which was a new plan.
What is that? Explain that to me.
The partnership plan is the, I guess, the, the plan that you have to, you enter into a partnership with the state. So you have to have fiscal every year, you have to have, you can have medical coaching. You know, I'm on that plan, so they call me every so often and ask me what I'm doing for exercise and, you know, how I need to improve my eating and, you know, things of that type. So if you don't want to do that, then you go into the no partnership plan, which is higher. It's higher premium, so.
But okay, is either one of those plans, do either one of those plans offer you like a, I'm sure it does, a directory of providers that you can go to? Is it like the PP, is it Blue Cross P Network, S Network?
It's S, S Network.
Okay.
Yeah. So Blue Cross, any one, the partnership, the no partnership, standard, limited, HSA, you can go to any in that S Network. Limited Health Savings Account, the copays are higher and the deductibles are higher. Partnership, no partnership, standard, deductibles are lower, copay's lower, but premiums are higher. So you just kind of determine what is the best plan, you know, for you and your family. And you know, we've got our open enrollment period, which actually ends tomorrow. So employees have been making their choices. And we'll not really know until we get that final report next month of how it will really affect us, but just our estimates.
Are we giving them the option to sign with Blue Cross, Blue Shield or Cigna?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, they can sign in any of those. There's Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Cigna Local Plus, and then Cigna Open Access. So they have opportunity to sign up for any one of those. Those are all state plans and classified and certified have the opportunity. Also, you will notice that the limited in the Health Savings Account employee-only plans are the same premium for certified and classified. And that's so that we're in compliance with ACA.
That's the minimum requirement.
Right. For ACA. So we're in compliance there. We meet the discrimination clause by our math. So if we keep everything the same like we have or proposing, then we should be in compliance across the board. And I feel, you know, doing what's right for our employees. And we may have to increase next year. But you know, I know we had more people take insurance, our classified staff, last year that were never able to really afford insurance before. And you know, I think that's a good thing for them, so. So I'll try and answer any questions.
So do we need to approve this? Do we need to, do we as a board need to make a motion to approve this? How do you need us to do it?
Yeah, we'll need to approve the premiums for this year. Everybody's in agreement.
It's this time we need to make a motion to approve the insurance premiums at this time?
Make a motion to approve the premiums.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
I appreciate that. I know our, our employees will appreciate that. They, that keeps, you know, we were able to do just a step raise this year. And if we were not able to keep those premiums the same, I think, you know, that would have been more money out of folks' pockets. So I really appreciate that. I know our employees appreciate that, so.
You know, of course, I think the employees understand and appreciate the fact the school system has gone as far as we could in all fiscal prudence in helping to subsidize these plans. We just wish it were possible to go a lot further.
Oh, yeah, we've been asked to do that.
But, but you know, we're just, we're kind of at the limit in terms of the employer subsidy. Many years ago, you know, this is a perennial question, the issue of, of our county's support for its employees' health insurance. And I think I was still on the county commission at the time. I think I was chairing the education committee. And Dr. Hale, I believe, was superintendent at the time. And I was just kind of interested in the impact of insurance premiums. And they've gone up, you know, they've, they've doubled since that time and maybe more than that. But I just asked Dr. Hale, you know, if you could just blank out the names on the payroll sheet. I'd just like to see what is the take-home pay after some, particularly the classified employees, it could be school secretaries, could be custodial staff, janitorial staff, what they take home after they pay their portion of the premium. And I remember there was one case, and I've forgotten which school, one of the classified employees was taking home, I remember it's like $12 in coins after paying. So the employee was basically working just to have health insurance for the family.
For the family, right. And it's still, you know, it continues to go up and it's still high. You know, our, we're able to, you know, I was just, you know, we've got 70 employees now that take the limited plan, employee only, and it's under $100 a month, $94 a month. And we've never been able to do that in the past. And you know, I think that's, that's good.
Just how limited, when we say limited, we're talking about very limited, aren't we?
Well, it's the, like I said, the copay, I think, is $35 to go to the doctor. It's $25 in the other plan.
That's not, that's not...
It's still the Blue Cross, Blue Shield insurance, it still has the same... And now deductibles, I think, 6,600 for the individual out-of-pocket total, out-of-pocket. I have to look back at the other, you know, just regular deductible. But that's, that's family plan, 6,600 is family plan. Individual, it may be 20, 30.
16.
16, okay.
Okay, so that's not as bad. But I saw the limited and, and the difference in the premiums. I thought, this is severely limited, but it's...
No, it's not.
So what you tell me is it's better than what I expected?
Yeah.
Do you know a $35 office visit copay's not that big?
No, sure not.
I mean, hours is 35.
Surely not.
And of course, with the ACA, all the lifetime limits are removed, all pre-existing condition exclusions are removed, all that's gone.
Right.
One of the great accomplishments of the ACA.
Right. All right, well, we'll move to the music, music program.
It is.
The...
If you had a pre-existing condition, you know what I'm talking about.
Well, I agree with that part of it.
Just want to give you a little update on our, our music program, our discussion there. Really not ready to make any kind of a program change, because we've had program change. We talked about doing an after-school music program. We met with Mr. Farum, Mr. Walker, Mr. Tidwell about a week ago. Mr. Clark, who is the band director at the middle school, has since taken another job in his hometown in Chattanooga. So we're now looking for a replacement. So until we can get that role filled, we're really not ready to move forward with that. But what we plan to do is determine how many that might be interested in maybe a two-day, three-day-a-week after-school program at the middle school. And then determine where we go from there, once we can get a teacher in line. You know, kind of budget-wise, we felt like we would probably have to take a look at that as well as the instruments given with parents, determine how we would do that. But we still are moving forward with that. We just hit a little speed bump there with Mr. Clark out. So we'll move forward with that.
What kind of reading are you getting? I would assume you brought this up in principals' meetings. What kind of feedback are you getting in terms of...
Everybody's been pretty positive. I mean, they, they, they don't know how many will take advantage of it. And you know, we'll have to work out transportation. That's a big issue, is transportation. And if parents are working, kids want to be involved, you know, can we provide transportation maybe to the middle school where they can, you know, pick them up after school there? So we'll have to work on all that. So I think that's the thing, is that how many will take advantage of it and would it be logistically possible for transportation?
Well, you know, the, the Smith Trust at First National Bank has been, you know, they've kind of put out an overture that they would like to participate and like to help in that. And I think that's exactly the kind of support...
The biggest thing we were talking about was instruments. That would be the biggest issue. So that might be something, once we get it. But we're going to keep it on for the December meeting and try to have some more hard data for everybody there. Just a few other items to bring up in operations. You have a handout, looks like this, it's just for your information. I, Artin, U.S. Department of Homeland Security will be doing another program, Vigida, that's taking the lead on that, November 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the middle school auditorium. And this is more geared toward internet safety of students. So it's more for parents only. So we will, we're going to start getting that message out for everybody. Be much like the program we had earlier at the high school there. And then I think we had another handout on our snupper program. That is going to start, I think, today, as a matter of fact.
It'll be helpful if I tell you about Suddet.
That's okay. I think, I think we're starting, starting today or maybe next week. But we've always been able to do snacks after school for students who are in tutoring or athletics. And this is going to be more of a supper program than anything else. So it'll be a sandwich, more, more than just a snack for students who are able to stay after school. And this will be through our CEP program. So it will be starting from ages 2 to 18 years old and be from 2:45 to 3:30 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday.
At every school?
Every school.
Probably about, how many do we have in, in the after-school programs right now? Wouldn't we have a hundred or something?
I would even hate to even guess. You know, we've got aims programs that are going right now, which are tutoring programs. We have a tutoring program started this week at the Hamilton Street Housing Authority. We have numerous sports, you know, we've got...
Focus school grants.
Huh?
Focus school grants.
Focus school grants. You know, just ACT, we have, we started our ACT after-school class at the high school when, two, three weeks ago.
Three weeks.
So we've had about 50 students involved in that or more. So lots of things going on in the afternoons, academic and athletic, so. So that was a, you know, I wanted to bring your attention to that. Have a, I don't know if you've got your journal this month from TSBA? And just wanted to call your attention to our article in, in the TSBA Journal on literacy. And Ms. Wood and Ms. Turner and I kind of worked on that together. So we're, we're published in the TSBA Journal and our work in literacy is published there. So we're very, very proud about that, so.
Taking, taking the lead.
Taking the lead.
Bringing back a good autograph.
Just another update, got this today, as a matter of fact. So I'll try to provide you more information in my update, Friday update. But the commissioner just notified all directors in the state that our NAEP scores have been released on the National, National Assessment of Educational Progress, known as the nation's report card. And you know, very happy to say that Tennessee is the only state to grow faster than the nation in both fourth grade and eighth grade science. Eighth graders were the fastest improving in the nation. Fourth graders were the second fastest improving in the nation. Tennessee students doubled the average national growth across states in both fourth and eighth grade science. And now we rank 19th and 21st in the country in fourth and eighth grade science, which is the highest ranking Tennessee's ever had. And so our students do participate on a limited fashion. We don't, we're chosen to take the NAEP exam. So we've had schools, all of our schools have participated at some time or another. So I thought that was really, really great.
That calls for celebration.
That is.
Are you going to throw a party for...
I don't know if we're going to throw a party, but we're, we're really going to, you know, get that information out, so.
Worth celebrating.
Last item I have for operations is, and you don't have this information. We've just, we've been working on this for the last few weeks. But as you're aware... But, um, as you're aware, we applied for a LEAP grant back, uh, several months ago for advanced robotics. And, uh, we didn't get the grant, uh, the board pledged, uh, forty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the, it, the board's part of the equipment, uh, for that. The total bill for that grant was over a hundred thousand dollars if we, uh, got the grant, but we had to have a certain portion of, uh, um, money to put up. You know, to be able to get the other part. So we didn't get the grant, but Mr. Herzog, uh, who I think everybody knows, business roundtable chair, is very enthusiastic about still pursuing that. And he's gone out to, uh, try to gather more funding, uh, to make this become a reality for our school system. Um, what would happen would be that, uh, we would have one robotic work cell and a STEM cart and an entire vision system at the high school to go along with our mechatronics program. We would have seven, uh, Moto SIM software seats at each elementary school, along with two video kiosks. And a training and curriculum to go along with that. Um, and he's going to the city of McManville, to the area industry plants to recruit funding. And he's also putting, you know, proposing that he put in five thousand dollars of his own money, uh, to that program. Um, what I would like to see us do is if we could, uh, keep that same amount of money and even if we could round that off to fifty thousand, which we can, we can handle out of our, uh, uh, budget, I think. I met with our budget folks today and we'd already set aside that money for that grant anyway, and we, we didn't have to spend it. Uh, but I think if we could, you know, pledge at, at least that fifty thousand, because all the equipment is going into the schools. And then if the business and the industry could raise the other, uh, sixty-five thousand, then we would be able to purchase that, so. Just, like I said, we've been working on that, I know Bill's kind of been involved in that some, and we kind of got that finalized the last few weeks to see, but, um. If, if the board's willing to do that, you know, like I said, we'd already budgeted for that, and I think we can, that money's there. Uh, it's not any kind of money that's, you know, we would have to come up with, it's, it's sitting there, so.
We've already got the forty-five thousand budgeted and you're, you're suggesting we, we take it to fifty thousand, add five, is that an adequate number, the fifty thousand?
I, I think it is.
All the equipment will be, will be staying with the school system.
It will be, and it'll be long-term, and I, I think that's an adequate number, and I know Mr. Herzog's got a budget that he's approached with other people. And I think they can, uh, come up with the rest of that, so.
Mr. Chairman, I want to move, if it's, uh, if it's in order, I want to move that we, um, sustain the forty-five thousand that we'd originally appropriated and add five thousand to make the total, uh, advanced robotics training grant, fifty thousand dollars.
Have a motion, we have a, uh, motion for that, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, vote in cash.
Thank you very much, and that's a one-time fee, that, that'd just be a one-time, one-time fee.
We can come back now because, just because we, we missed the LEAP grant this year, we can, can we come back, because we will be adding equipment.
Right.
As we go down the road, so we can come back and.
Oh, yes, yeah, we can come back and apply again.
Sounds like it would help that we've did not, we weren't just waiting for the grant, we went ahead and did some things.
You know, and, and I, I couldn't let the moment pass, and I, I know Bobby would, would agree with me, Todd Herzog has been, uh, you know, I don't think he ever gets discouraged. You know, we, we, we missed the LEAP grant, but, but he said, we'll go on anyway.
Right.
Uh, you know, hey, we're Warren County, we can do this. And you, you've got to appreciate that kind of enthusiasm and, and persistence.
He is definitely a, a supporter of Warren County schools and.
Yeah, big time.
I don't know what we'd do without him, he's, he's definitely a person that, that really supports education and, and our students and, and business and industry in our community. And, you know, he, I think it's, you know, talking about the global market that we're in right now and supporting others. We, like I said, we did, we applied for a LEAP grant in the Coffee County Consortium to be able to have students have our access there. They, they apply for grants and with us, so it's, it's kind of a big happy family.
That's good.
Uh, so, but I, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have, and, uh, I think, uh, we've got a whole line of folks, we might want to pull in if you want to go back. Go back to recognition.
Go make your recognition.
Okay, so you have many we got out here, we'll have to go to them or they have to come to us.
Uh, you know, e- every community really ought to have a Todd Herzog, but we actually do, so, I, I'm just very, very grateful, and he works so well with, with our industries, he understands what they need.
I'm really happy they called it supper and not dinner. It's a southern thing, isn't it?
Yeah, southern.
I have the.
The booze meal is dinner, there was a dinner bell that you rang.
Yeah, yeah, there was a reason.
Supper is biblical.
I think we all gonna try our own table in here, is that so, Eddie?
Sure.
All right, come right in.
Come in, just come right in.
Come right in.
You're getting in your time, so.
Come right in, here are our champions.
We have to make a couple of rows there, and may have to make a couple of rows there. I think if the parents, parents won't come in, they can come on in.
Yeah, come on in, come on in, we'll, we'll fill the room, come on in, come on in.
There you go.
We'll make room.
Stop right there, stop right there.
We'll make room.
Parents, if y'all want to come in, come on in, we've got plenty right here.
Come on in, come on in.
Come in, come around, I'm in.
Well, if there, there's some more out there, let's get, let's, let's get everybody in the room. Yeah, if we can kind of pull in over here. Good, good, you want to sit here, I'll put you, I'll put you right here.
I'll sit there.
Here, have a seat, have a seat.
I'm taking out my.
There you go.
We got back over this, this row, it's, oh, you're good, you're good, come on, come on in, folks. Yeah. Finally, after many years, got new chairs, that's pretty good, isn't it?
It's comfortable.
Come, come on in, folks, come on in.
We got everybody.
We've got, we've got rooms.
Mr. Tidwell, most everyone. Well, we want to, first of all, say thank you for coming to our board meeting tonight, and, uh, we just want to recognize your accomplishments. We've, uh, seen you guys play, you know, all year long and, and looked for you in the paper and, and watched and, and seen the success that you've had. And we just felt like it'd be a wonderful opportunity to be able to recognize you for the work that you've done and the outstanding season that you've had. You know, not many people say that they, uh, won the first one and won the last one, so, uh, we want to make sure that we honor you with that. So what we have for you to maybe place in your locker room is a certificate of special recognition, uh, presented to the Warren County Middle School Football Team. For the two thousand sixteen CTC Conference Champions, CTC Bowl Champions, and an undefeated eight-and-o season. So we appreciate. We appreciate all, all the work you've done and all the work of the parents being here and supporting them, you know, we can't do anything without our, our parents and getting these guys to practice and getting them home. And, you know, in this, you know, this weather we've been having, you know, it's not football weather, so you gotta, you know, getting in those cars, kind of sweaty every night, that's kind of, kind of tough too. So, uh, we appreciate all the hard work and, and the things that you've done, and especially the parents and the support that, that you all have given to these, these guys. And I hope we can, uh, get every one of you over there to the high school and, uh, you know, continue that as, as well over there.
Let's do that.
Donny, you got any?
I, I think the coach also said, come on up here, coach.
Um, I just, I know, uh, for us as a team, I'd like to say, uh, a, a big thank you to Mr. Cox and the board, um, for, uh, all the support that you're giving us, uh, this year. And the, uh, personally, the four years I've been at the middle school. Um, any, any issues, anything that we've needed, um, it's, it's been taken care of, uh, and we appreciate that. Um, so just thank you for all the support you've given us.
Absolutely.
Got any words?
Just real quick, I would like to add, great season by our players, I know everyone's proud of them. But more importantly to me is the character that they have in school, the great job that they do in school, representing the middle school and doing their best in the classroom. I'm tickled to death with them, just great, great kids, uh, it's an honor to have them in school, and our coaches did a super job. And we lost, uh, three of the kids off of the team that were, were starters early in the year, and they still finished eight-and-o. But I think they set the standard for what the expectation was, held to it, and the coaches did a great job, great job. We're proud of you fellas, big time proud of you.
Wanted to say thank you to Mr. Bennett, he called, uh, you know, earlier in the, in the month, he's our athletic chair and our chairman of our board tonight, uh, in Ms. Martin's absence. And wanted to bring the, the team in and recognize, uh, everyone, so just thank you, Mr. Bennett, for being willing to, to bring the guys in. And, and the board for, uh, recognizing, uh, greatness, I mean, there's, like I said, there's not many that, uh, can say you won the first and the last, so you, you've done a great job. Like I said, we want to make sure that, uh, you're, uh, wearing those red uniforms on Friday nights too, so stick with it and, and, uh, come on over to the high school and we'll, we'll continue to maybe be eight-and-o.
Thanks for having him, I think it's really encouraging for y'all recognizing him for that.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, we can, like I said, we can do anything to help, that's what we're, what we're here for, so, uh, just keep up the good work, guys. And be a good example, not only to your school, but your community as well, so we appreciate you.
All right.
Thank you.
No pioneers.
That's right.
That was good.
Success in our sports. Good to see you.
I, I was, I was out on that Saturday afternoon, that was a moment of glory in this. They deserve the celebration time, they deserve it. Congratulations to you, this is tremendous.
Good job.
Were you able to get some pictures, you want to try to outside, it's dark now.
Yeah, it's dark, is there like a group picture of them that they already have?
Yeah, we thought you could get a group picture, a team picture.
Yeah.
We can get it to you.
All right, that'll work.
Y'all might even have one in that, you know, when they did theirs, when, that they have.
But with their red.
Uh, I mean, they have their uniforms on. Actually, you got a team picture anywhere that?
Um, yes, sir.
Okay, if you can get that team, we'll get it to Lisa.
Okay.
All right, I think, uh, you want to go back to student advisory?
Yeah, okay, at this time, we have a report for student advisor.
Sorry, my finger be out, I, I had to, I was in Kewell all day at a professional development, which was really cool. And then, um, I came back for the Hamilton Street, I'm working with them, what a great program, it's, it's really amazing what goes on over there, and, but Tommy, we'll take care of it.
The first high school basketball game will be Monday, November twenty-first, it's, um, white-out night. Uh, white-out t-shirts will be sold on Thursday and Friday for ten dollars. While on sports, there are a few congratulations. Christian Locke qualified for the state cross-country meet. Sally Wilmore was named the all-region team for soccer. Natalie Reed was named the second all-region team for soccer. The library will be hosting Book Character Day on Monday for Halloween, October thirty-first. News from Hosa, the CNA, CNA program conducted their first blood drive of the year, uh, it was a great success for the total of sixty-two donors. Warren County will have its inaugural Community Day Craft Fair and Flea Market on the twenty-ninth, uh, from nine AM to three PM at the high school student parking lot. Admission is free and all proceeds benefit the high school students. Guidance is proud to announce that the Advised Tennessee Grant was accepted and Shawna Samor will be serving as Warren County's College Advisor. We were one of thirty high schools chosen throughout the state to have this grant, and it will last for three years. Uh, she'll be focusing primarily with juniors and seniors, specifically seniors for this year, on a post-secondary college education and the processes that go with that. Also from Guidance, uh, the college fair was a great success with a, you know, approximation of forty vendors in, uh, from colleges, the military, technical schools, and financial aid assistance. With the clubs, FBLA will be celebrating, um, Prematurity Awareness Month for November by, uh, walking and raising money for the March of Diamonds organization. Ms. Shannon Ford, uh, the FFA is doing the annual fruit and nut sale for this year, and we have some, some of the order forms here. Whoever I need to leave those with.
Actually. Get those out for you.
They will be collected, this says tomorrow, but I'm not sure when exactly.
November fourth.
November fourth.
So next Friday.
That is everything I have.
The, uh, item on there, I wanted to, Mr. Walker, might want to talk a little bit more about the Advised Tennessee Grant. Uh, I think we've got our, uh, person ready to go there.
Boot in the ground Monday.
Boots on there on Monday, okay, I didn't want to be sure when they're, we're starting, and that's, that's the grant that, uh, we applied for, the high school, uh, applied for. And, uh, it's actually through the governor's office, and, uh, that's a three-year grant, uh, where they pay everything, they pay the entire salary. And the goal of the person that's in that role is to work with students, uh, you know, to help them get ready for post-secondary. So one of the things that we pitch right in with the board's, uh, focus is being with, with Guidance and helping students, uh, get the information to go there. So we're, uh, very happy about that, so that's a good thing. I'm glad you'll be there Monday.
No, this past Monday.
Oh, last Monday, all right, so she's already.
She's already, she went on the field trip today.
That's even better, that's even better, okay, I appreciate that, appreciate the report.
Okay, I guess at this time, we're ready for the curriculum and achievement report, just exactly.
Okay, thank you very much, we've got two, uh, policy items up for second reading, we've already discussed these on first reading at the last meeting. But, uh, the first one is JHA, Student Solicitations and Fundraising Activities, and I would just call on, uh, and this was, of course, in, in your package. Um, the call on, uh, Mr. Cox and Ms. Phillips, if you have anything you want to say about this.
Again, this is just, um, we changed this in order to allow for the, um, web-based, um, fundraising activities, which we had allowed in the past by a procedure, I suppose. And we need to get this into policy for, um, for our auditors and to be in compliance. And so it just sets out that, that's the first section of the rest of the policy is, um, as it has been in the past. Or actually, I'm sorry, page two is the web-based online fundraising.
Okay, and basically, web-based, uh, the, the, the platform would be used for merchandise and services, not.
Not for cash, right. And there are some strict, um, accounting type, um, issues and, and inventory controls, so that the items would be shipped directly to the school and would be inventoried and that sort of thing. It would stay with the school should a teacher leave, and, but it does allow for them to use. does allow for them to use, um, oh, the name, I apologize, um, certain web-based companies to do that.
GoFundMe and...
Well, GoFundMe is not allowed to fundraise, it is a specific one, and they take the money that is raised, and then they, the teacher also submits a, a wishlist, and so they take that and combine those items, and then they are sent, the items are actually sent to the school, so there is no money changing hands, there is no money coming to the school or to a specific employee, it's bought for them in inventory directly when it arrives at school.
Basically, th- this policy just kind of tightens the bolts down on accounting and transparency and reporting.
Right, it's, it was, we had, uh, business rules in order, you know, for that, and these are the business rules, the auditor just, uh, requests, so that we need to have them in board policy and to make their compliance.
You know, I, I've, I've had a question for a long time about our fundraising activities, and of course, is this policy JHA states, it restates, that these fundraising activities are intended to supplement, not supplant, funds that would come ordinarily from public resources, from general tax revenues, and I think that's a very important principle. Uh, the, the only question I would have, and this is not the time to be working this out, but when we have basically commercial fundraisers coming into our schools, you know, I'm, just to give one example, kind of book fair kind of thing, scholastic, um, I, I think that, uh, that there's an argument that could be made on the side of transparency, if we actually disclose the percentage that goes to the school and the percentage that goes to the commercial fundraising entity, and that's, tonight's not the time for that discussion, but I would hope at some point, we could have that discussion, so that, so that the parents and those who are supporting, uh, this program could know just to what extent the school actually benefits. I mean, I'm not casting aspersions, I'm not disparaging, uh, what's going on, but just in the interest of transparency, that percentage, and if you look under Section Four, Item G, the last item, uh, this is something that has to be submitted with the information that goes to the school, this doesn't, and of course, in that sense, it becomes a public document.
Right, well, there, all of the fundraisers have to be approved in advance.
Right.
Through the state fundraising form, and then at the end of the year, uh, there is a reconciled sheet that comes as well, uh, to show how much money was raised during that fundraiser and where that money went, so all of that's audited as well. So, each one of those fundraisers have a reconciliation sheet at the back end as well.
Right, and Item G under, uh, Section Four, margin of profit and how it is to be paid to the school. So, that becomes part of, part of the record.
Sure.
So, uh, the other item, and I want to move for adoption en masse on second reading, is EDD scheduling and routing, uh, anything Bobby, you and Robin want to say about that?
Um, this just really, um, includes our pre-K program, so that it gives the, um, actually...
The opportunity for pre-K busing as needed.
Right, as, as determined by the discretion of the director. Right now, we don't have that, I think we may have one, one student.
Actually, that, that student's...
We don't have, we don't have any students, so this would allow us to do that as we grow this pre-K program.
If we, if we need to do that.
And in order to do that, we have to have specific rules for pre-K students.
And let's see, on, you know, on the second page, if the supervisor of the district's pre-K program determines in his or her discretion that a child who is educationally at risk should be provided.
Yes, when this came up, it would be very prohibitive for the student that we were discussing, um, and it was no additional cost at the time, so we just needed this.
Okay. Well, all right, I'm going to move, Mr. Chairman, for adoption of JHA and EDD Student Solicitations and the second one, scheduling and routing, on second reading.
We have a motion to approve Policy JHA and Policy EDD on the second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Other likewise, motion carries.
Thank you very much, that completes the, uh, business for curriculum and achievement, Mr. Chairman.
Facilities, Ms. Black?
Okay, just a quick update on our projects that are about complete, I talked to Mr. Colwell, and he sent me an email, said that Bobby Ray Elementary School Gymnasium has now been approved by the state fire marshal, we've got a certificate of occupancy, and the maintenance building is now erected and will be completed in a couple of weeks. Out of committee, we had, um, some things discussed, first thing was the West Elementary Playground Equipment, the president of the PTO from West Elementary was present, and the PTO has raised enough money to buy some new playground equipment for West Elementary. What they're asking us for is assistance with the labor to tear down the old playground equipment and install the new, so during committee, we did have a motion and got that approved, and I'd like to bring it before the board now to approve the Warren County Board of Education with our maintenance department to assist them in tearing down the old equipment and installing the new.
Have a motion on the floor for the maintenance to do the work at West Elementary, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Other likewise, motion carries.
Donnie also presented, um, his plan for strategic plan for the next three years for the maintenance department, so we, in committee, we presented a motion to approve the plan to proceed with his strategic plan submitted by the maintenance department for upgrades to schools over the next three years, so I'd like to submit that before the board now and get a formal approval.
We have a motion for the board to approve the three-year strategic plan by the maintenance department, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any discussion?
And the last...
Motion carries, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, and the last thing that I have is that Mr. Philip Crowe is our, I don't know his official title, is it?
Energy manager.
Okay, energy manager, he's going to be retiring at the end of the year, and we've updated the job description so that we can put it out on the site to, uh, possibly get somebody in to work with him before he actually retires, so we've approved the new job description, changing the actual title from Warren County Schools Energy Manager to Warren County Schools Energy Manager System IPM Coordinator, so we had that motion approved in committee, and I'd like to bring it before the board now for voter approval.
We have a motion to, uh, approve the new job title for the maintenance for energy efficient and IPM, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
And that's all I have, facilities and resource management.
At this, at this time, are there any other business to be brought before the board?
I have one, just one item, just for public, um, information, Lisa, we'll get this to you, uh, probably next week, uh, but as the board approved, uh, I guess a couple months ago, uh, the changing of our elementary parent-teacher conference to a time that the school would deem to be appropriate since it is on election day, uh, is originally scheduled on election day, so we have most of the dates here, uh, actually, West Elementary and Center Town, well, West Elementary is having theirs tonight, and then we have the other dates that range from the first, and then there's a couple schools that are still going to have it on the eighth, uh, and, but make it where, you know, parents can still vote and make it their child's teacher. So, uh, Monday night is the high schools, I think it's the seventh is the high school of parent-teacher conference, and then, uh, Thursday is the middle school parent-teacher conference, and we will get the dates out for the other elementary schools and get those to Lisa, and put them on our website and notify through social media parents, uh, the, uh, the new date for that next week, so I'll give them a couple weeks to plan for that, so, and then hopefully, we'll put that on our radar next year, we make out the calendar, so that was our fault, or, not our fault, that was my fault, that, that got, uh, that got in there, I just didn't have that on my radar, I guess I should have. So, we'll, we'll make sure we get that changed and get that out, out there. Also, on the motion for the, uh, uh, West Elementary, uh, playground equipment, probably need to check, make sure if we need to, since the PTO's buying that, if we need to bid that equipment, but we'll double-check that and see, sometimes auditors get a little finicky about that, uh, if they do, then we'll, we'll go through that bid process and, and get that done, I'll notify Mr. Toward that they have to do that, so I'll just check on that, but if it's, everything's good with it, sometimes they say it's fine, sometimes they say you need to bid it, so we'll check with them, make sure.
Okay, uh, any, any other business? Uh, Ms. Blair has requested that, uh, at the, uh...
You remembered, I didn't.
Thank you. At, uh, the TSBA convention for us to pair our shirts and wear them, our short, long fleece shirts, and...
Good on them.
Now, do I have a motion to the chairman?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.